All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call the main to order. Please join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by councilmember Mock.
Second.
Second by councilmember Pesco. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, community comment. Presenters are welcome to address the city council for matters related or relevant to the city of Carver's authority for up to five minutes on matters that are not listed on tonight's meeting agenda. Specific requests for information may not be immediately available, in which case follow-up will occur with the presenter sometime after the meeting. The city council should not be expected to immediately act on requests, however, they will follow up accordingly and may schedule items for future consideration. Is anyone here for community comment? Come on up, Mary. If you could introduce yourself and share your address, please.
Mary Williamson, 123rd Street East.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks. So, I am here in response to the flyer that I received on my vehicle that was announcing the council is going to be discussing the parking ordinance and potentially rewriting some parts of it. It directly affects me as I live downtown and I do park on the street as I've done for near 25 years. I have a few bullet points, so if you don't mind, I'll just punch through them. And if anyone has an answer or an immediate quick comment, we can do it that way and then we reserve our time. So the first question I have is what brought this to a head? It was my understanding from Brent's memo, there were a few complaints to the city about maybe it was a trailer parked too long across the street or in front of your home or something like that. I did speak to councilperson Mock about this briefly. And that's when I decided it was probably just easier to come in and just kind of present it. But, so, was it 10 requests? Are they documented? Was it through the sheriff's department? Was it just random calls to the city? Is this over six months? Is this a year? Is this cumulative? Any answers to that?
If it works, Mary, if you could just run through your list and then I can answer at the end.
Okay. So that was the first question is just how many complaints and where they generated? How many homes and/or rentals have one or none adjacent off-street parking available? Was this something that the city looked at? Do you have a number? Has anyone taken the time to actually find out how many people park at their residence in the street? The next one is there are several commercial buildings on Broadway that have second-story and main-level rental housing. And a few of them don't have any off-street dedicated parking. Some do. Some, they've, you know, modified doghouse, turned their off-street parking into a patio. So their upstairs renter now parks over on Third Street. Then also, as far as that dedicated parking, that if they're using the street for their rental or their home, there's circumstances revolving around that. Each and every one might be different. Some is access to the home. We don't have a back door, so I choose to park in front. Is it adjacent, immediate, or is it off-site? Where I have my shop on Broadway, there is parking that's available to the property owner, but it's on the other side of the creek and now is in eminent domain, so he will be losing that. So now he has no off-street parking. And then the ADA discussion, some of these renters park as close to their doors as they can because they're handicapped or disabled. How would you discern if a truck, my truck, was the owner's or the resident, you know, in front of which it was parked? If I park my car out front, I get the flu. I don't move my car for eight days. Am I going to get towed? Am I going to get ticketed? Do I have to call the city? Do I have to realize what day it is to get a, you know, a variance to park in front of my own home? It was indicated that I wouldn't be included in this somehow, like, oh, you can still park in front of your home, but how do we make that distinction? So is there going to be some clause or script or a list of cars and things that a sheriff is going to have to roll through every time he decides he needs to go around and make sure no one's illegally parked? If after eminent domain, we lose some parking for some of the businesses or rental parking, that's going to be lost, which directly can impact the owner of that property's ability to do commerce for them to be able to rent their property. Their rental now becomes less valuable because they don't have off-street parking to offer a renter that might be interested in renting their property. You know, the coffee shop, I think, he doesn't have off-street parking. He has public parking for his, what do they call it, Airbnb. How many, oh, in-home businesses are there in Carver that require a fleet of vehicles? Sounds like that might have been a point of discussion as well, that there were some home businesses that had multiple vehicles that they used and they were filling up a cul-de-sac or a street or something like that. And so again, is this one thing or is this, is there 30 businesses doing this? And then finally, can we just, what happened to just talking to people in person? Having a one-on-one discussion with people because now we're bringing in more enforcement fines, tow charges, puts people under stress in different situations. I have a friend moving from New York to California. They stopped with their U-Haul truck. They're going to stay with us for three weeks. And we pull up in front of the house and all of a sudden we're getting tickets and we have to shuffle a U-Haul every six days. And it's temporary. It's a temporary thing. And I would imagine most of these complaints are coming from temporary situations unless it's up on blocks with no tires. And then I just think it's kind of an overreach of the council to consider this. This is not an HOA community. I don't think anyone in this town is prepared to be that micromanaged to the point that they can't park their car in the street in front of their own home. We have multiple drivers, you know, I've already, you know, you go through those, all the details. And it's like, I'm wondering to what degree has the city discussed the details, the minute details? Are we talking about five complaints with five little issues? Or is it something that we seriously need to blanket the entire city with this new ordinance that I think is completely overreaching? I think that's it in a nutshell. So, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Mary. Just, if the council's okay, just a couple of things. So I think the big thing maybe for, for Mary and many others that are interested in this, this is a, I would describe this as a should we or should we not, you know, if I'm speaking on behalf of the council. So I would say maybe once every two to three months, we'll get a complaint either related to a car being parked for a prolonged period, you know, and prolonged can be defined by people in many different ways. There is a, I would say, a consistent issue with providing parking for folks for winter regulations when they don't have off-street parking. So when we, we don't have an ordinance, I'll collect a series of them, what you can see here. And so I'm essentially bringing these topics to the council, so they may come back and say, you know what? We don't want anything. We're just going to leave this alone for now to maybe see what you're advocating for. They might say, hey, under these certain conditions, we'd like to regulate it and here's how. So I would offer like some of those very good specific questions that you have can't be answered because I'm not sure what the council's going to do as far as, do they even, you know, I'm not even talking about ingredients. Do they even want to make the cake at this point? So that's what I had offered for that. I don't know how many off-street or how many apartment or how many homes don't have off-street parking. I think I did that count from memory like a couple of years ago and it was somewhere in the neighborhood of like a half a dozen. If you know more, you know, again, that's not certainly a scientific, but, you know, being in the community for 15 years, I have a pretty good lay of the land. There could be more. I can tell you that in the 15 years I've been here, I haven't once been asked to provide parking on the city's behest to like, where can I park off-street during a snow emergency? So no one's calling and asking for it. But again, it's an issue that I wanted to broach with the, the city council. So I'd offer that in some instances, is the winter parking regulation rules are in effect? They're just not being enforced for folks and they, as you can see, when the plows go around, there's, there is probably over two dozen cars that kind of got plowed in and then the public services team comes back and removes the snow, which is something that we're at least trying to alleviate. Was that Mickey Mouse?
It was, on my watch, yeah.
But as far as complaints, you know, there isn't like a, you know, this big groundswell. But as you can imagine, if someone calls and says, hey, I want something to be done, I say, we don't have an ordinance. They say, why not? And so I'm just communicating that to the council and asking them if they'd like to have an ordinance in place. And so we're very much at the kind of infancy, if you will, of that conversation.
All right. Anybody else for community comment? You can introduce yourself and share your address too, please.
Sure. My name's Craig Shapiro. I'm at 1586 Edgbrook Lane. And I'd also like to talk about the proposed parking ordinance. I think it's important to remember that parking cars in cities is something that humans do in every major city across the United States and even the ones I've been to in Europe. And so it's not an inherently sinister activity. Any type of regulation we have, we should narrowly tailor it to whatever evil that we're trying to get after, whether it's people in the way of plows, you know, maybe rotating one side of the road to the other. Maybe it is cars that are abandoned and it's like a meth lab van that's been there for several months. Certainly we should be able to get after that. But to the extent it's people parking in front of their homes, these are taxpayers, they maybe have kids. I'm going to have two kids in the next year here that are drivers, right? So we're going to have four cars, be unwieldy to constantly be moving our cars in and out of the driveway rather than have the kids just park on the street again in front of my house. So that I think would inconvenience people. It would also inconvenience people living in multi-generational households. Maybe they've got grandma living with them. Again, that's going to have extra cars. Maybe grandma and a high schooler. And so I think, you know, to the extent we're looking to do some type of 72-hour rule, you know, I don't think that's, that would be appropriate. If, another option would be consider people who live there could go pay a $5 fee here and get a permit to just park in front of their house. That way, if somebody's from out of town, they come and they leave the, the meth van in front of a residence, it wouldn't be permitted, obviously, and so we could get after that. But then people who are just trying to park in front of their homes, maybe handicap people as you brought up or people who have lived here for a long time, they'd still be able to park there and we'd know that, okay, they're, they're good. They, they live there. Another thing to consider with the work vehicles, I had heard in one of our HOA meetings, people don't like the way the work vehicles look. You know, there's people who work as plumbers and electricians and a ton of other blue collar jobs. They have work vehicles, pest control. That's their livelihood. They, they pay taxes here and we're just got to deal with that. You know, I, I think to the extent that somebody doesn't want to look at a plumbing vehicle or a work truck, you know, that's, that's too bad. You know, that, that person lives here. They deserve to make a living. And so again, they'd be part of that permitting process to put that vehicle right in front of their house. I'm not saying park it in front of the, you know, neighbor's house, block them in, but in front of their own house, absolutely, they should be able to do that. And I think that's, that, that covers it. So just, I urge the council to just be very deliberate with what we're doing here because this is going to have a tremendous impact on folks and then we don't want it to, you know, just be something that's unwieldy and unreasonable. So thank you all for your time.
Thanks for coming down, Craig. Anybody else? Morgan? All right, let's see. We have no presentations or reports this evening, nor do we have any public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Get a motion by councilmember Sarah.
I'll, I'll second.
Second by councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Okay, business items. Let's see. Up next, we will be talking about parking, but we have a guest here. So cannabis regulatory authority is up next for our business items. Mr. Anderson.
Thanks, mayor and council. So tonight, we have in your packet the final ordinance that we talked about at the work session two weeks ago. This is a, I would say, the kind of the final cannabis regulation that we need to get in place. As you all know, the council approved zoning regulations in December of 2024 before the expiration of the city's moratorium that was in place on land use-related matters when it came to adult-use cannabis, now that the state legislature has legalized that and we're moving into sort of the phase where that's going to start becoming a licensed business venture here in Minnesota. And so the next step is to get in place some pretty straightforward regulations related to just the, the business regulation and the standpoint, from the standpoint of retail registration, zoning certification, which comes through the licensing process, and temporary cannabis events. I'll talk a little bit about each of the three things that are in the proposed ordinance that is in front of you tonight. And then we also have David Freshman from Carver County here to answer any questions and just give a very high-level, I think, overview of the county's retail registration process. So the, the ordinance again that you have in front of you tonight does amend your city code by adding a new section in your business regulations for cannabis and hemp businesses. There's three components. The first component is in there because state law requires any cannabis or hemp retailer to register with the local government that they operate in. Cities are required to either do that retail registration on their own or they have the ability to defer that authority to the, to the county in which they are located. The real reason I think most cities or many cities are exercising the right to do that is because it allows you to limit the number of dispensaries in your community to one per 12,500 residents. And in Carver County situation, they've actually enacted, and you can see it in the ordinance that is part of your packet, they've enacted a, an ordinance that provides local restrictions that are consistent with that limitation. In other words, they're being as strict as you could be if you were doing this on their own, which is nice because the city can then rely on the county to handle retail registration and also enforce that limitation. So for example, in Carver, we don't have 12,500 people. That means the maximum amount of cannabis retail registrations that you could choose to limit in your community would be one. If we're deferring that authority to the county, they conveniently limit it to the same thing. And so that's the first component of the ordinance. It's just a very short provision that effectively defers retail registration to Carver County. The second piece is really intended just to memorialize an existing requirement in state law and that's that the city process what are called business certifications when they'll start coming from the state. When licenses are sought in the near future, the OCM or the Office of Cannabis Management is going to send the city a form that says this business wants to operate in your community as a cannabis retailer or a cannabis manufacturer. There's a number of different businesses, business types that can operate. And then we would have to fill out this form that just simply looks at where they want to locate and says, yes, our zoning code allows that. Our building official has looked at that and they're meeting the building code, the fire code, everything looks good. And simply verify that for, for the state because the state isn't going to just take these businesses at their word for it, if that makes sense. So this provides a little bit of formality and process to that and delegates that authority to our community development director and that person's team so that they would have the ability to do that, you know, when, when those are presented to, to the city. And then the final provision in here includes some regulations around temporary cannabis events. This is, these are events that can last up to four days. They're open to the public. And in order to hold these events, you have to have a cannabis, temporary cannabis event license from the state or an event organizer license from the state. So these are going to be reputable organizations who are obtaining these licenses and meet all state requirements in order to do so. But many cities are adopting local regulations just to make sure there's some checks and balances on what those events can entail, specifically prohibiting onsite consumption, limiting the hours to generally the hours that you allow cannabis retail operators to, to remain open. And then the one change that you probably saw here from a draft that we talked about at the last work session was the council wanted to be consistent about the buffers being effectively non-existent in the central business district. So the buffers for these events now mirror our zoning regulations and where the retail establishments can operate, which I think for the reasons that you talked about at that work session make a lot of sense. So again, it's a relatively short ordinance and those are the three primary components to it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I know Mr. Freshman is, is here too if, in case you have questions about the county's process or maybe how they're ramping up to start doing cannabis registration. But I'll stand for, for questions.
All right. Mr. Freshman, welcome. Do you want to come on up?
Good evening, mayor and councilmember. Dave Freshman, property finance director for Carver County. So I oversee, my main responsibility is the budget and keeping an eye on the elected officials and their spending and roads and bridges. But I also oversee five other departments with property tax, assessing license centers and land records along with elections and licensing. And that's where we get, that's where I get pulled into cannabis. So we're currently in the elections and licensing. We're, we manage the process for liquor licenses and tobacco licenses for a variety of different cities. We do, we do it for the townships and cities do it if they, the county has adopted an ordinance and then the cities can choose to go be stricter and then they take it over. This one's a little different, but we think it's, it's going to be a similar process where cannabis was given to the cities and townships. And then as your attorney mentioned, it can be transferred or deferred to the county. But the actual processing and, and we already have the staff in place. We're already familiar with, you know, the alcohol licensing process, tobacco licensing process. So it's that same group of people are just going to be managing the cannabis in the same way. I would like to mention our ordinance that the county board adopted that Mr. Anderson referred to. I was also very clear in our ordinance that we want nothing to do with the zoning piece of it. That's totally on the cities. We handle it for the townships through our, through our planning and zoning department, which is also not in my area at all. And, and we're happy to, I was very happy to keep that clarified that from the county level, we're not doing any zoning or anything for the, for the townships. And it's clear in our ordinance that we expect, that we expect the, the cities to handle any zoning questions or building official or anything like that. So, you know, that's your guys' world. So we're happy to work together on that. And then as, as Mr. Anderson said, the county board did take, we had a workshop with various city planners and city administrators and that was the constant message where everybody is, they were very concerned about the county's ordinance limiting the number of cannabis retail operations in the county. But if we would have done it like most counties, then it could have been 10, right? We were limited to 10 in the county based on the county's population, but those 10 could have gone anywhere. They, all 10 could have came here if you guys would have transferred authority to us. So, you know, if you keep it yourself, it's one, but the potential then on a zoning ordinance where it was county-wide would be 10. That was very concerning to, obviously, to the number of cities and the township. So we worked with our county attorney, worked with the city attorney from a couple of cities, and we drafted an ordinance that, as Mr. Anderson said, limits the number of retail registrations in a city that transfers the authority to the county based on your population. So it's the same thing you guys would do, as, as was clear. So that seemed to make sense, everybody, and we felt it was the right way to go. So the county board approved that back in November. So I'll, I'll stand for any other questions as well.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight. I just have one question. I'm still wrapping my brain around the total number for the county. So there are 10 allowed because of our population.
In the county, that's correct, yep.
But if all of those 10 are distributed, just in, Carver's allowed one because of our population. Would there be a business in Carver that would potentially miss out if the 10 licenses are given out to other businesses in the county?
Yeah, that is correct. The county ordinance has written that there'll only be 10 in Carver County based on the population. So if they did, if those 10 licenses were distributed to other parts of the county and then a business came into Carver and if you had transferred the authority to Carver County, the county, we would deny that registration.
One, one thing I'd add to that, mayor and council though, is if that were to happen and the council felt strongly enough about wanting such a business, we could always modify our ordinance, take that authority back and enact a limit of one in Carver and then issue that one. I mean, I think what Mr. Freshman is saying, this is the way the statute reads too, is that the county has the registration issuing authority can limit it to 10 in the county. The city doesn't necessarily have to follow that. If it were doing the registration on its own now, I don't know if that's going to happen. I think that's probably an unlikely scenario, but keep that in mind.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. The county ordinance is just written for the cities or townships that transfer authority to us. If you don't transfer authority to us, then you guys are free to do whatever you'd like in terms of your numbers and you could have 10, 20 here if you want.
Do you have commitments from other communities? Anecdotally, I've heard some other communities there.
All, all the townships have transferred cannabis registration authority that did that quickly to the county. And two cities have, I, I meant to check, I think it's New Germany and City of Mayor, but I'm not sure. But there are, there are two. And then anecdotally, we've heard from most of the cities that they're planning on transferring, except for Waconia. Waconia already has a, a staff that issues their cigarette licenses and their liquor licenses and they felt they can, not much work, they'll just keep it in-house and do all three. So it's a little simpler for them just to do it. But, and we haven't heard from all of them formally, but informally, they're kind of all, like, kind of where you guys are leaning towards transferring it to the county.
So when the county went with 10, is that directed from the OCM at the state or is that the county's number that they?
No, that was the state. No, that was the state statute.
It is the state.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's one of those, I mean, I think it's, as far as I know, it's pretty unique, where the state's given us the authority to limit the number of a business, any kind of business in the county or in the city. You know, typically it doesn't happen. You can't limit the number of retail, or McDonald's in your town, or a number of barber shops, or anything like that. But with cannabis, the state statute allows the local government to limit the number based on the population. It's the 12,500.
Okay. Dave, I need a little clarification. So when it says that the state, the state allows, so can per popu, is the state, is this state mandated that it's by this population? Or can, because obviously, if we can decide to do it and have one more, let's say the county has 10, and we decide, Carver's going to do it ourselves, and we have one, that would be 11 in the county then?
Yeah, we, no. So the state gives the registering authority the ability to incorporate that limit. So the county can limit it, but the, the, they cannot limit it to any fewer than one per 12,500 people.
Okay.
So 10 happens to be the sweet spot for Carver County.
Okay.
In a bigger county like Hennepin, I think it's like 50-some or 60-some based on their population, because it's the total population of the county divided by 12,500. And so some cities, for example, who maybe aren't as excited about having a dispensary in their community, they're not only doing registration and limiting it to one per 12,000 in their city, but they're also adopting the county-wide limit. If 10, for example, in Carver have been established in our county, we won't allow anymore and don't have to allow anymore. But that assumes that, that 10 gets hit before anyone comes to your city anyway. So it's kind of a, a little bit of gamesmanship happening, but the legislation just gives that authority to the registering entity to, to impose those limits. But again, there's a minimum you have to absolutely allow.
Okay. So Carver County went with the minimum?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And that number could change too. I mean, if the population increases another 12,500 people, it's going to go up to 11, 12, and then 13. As, as the county grows, that limit will go up.
Thank you. I was just trying to clarify what maximum minimums were sent from the state OCM office. Thank you.
Kayla?
No questions.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For coming tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Let's see. So let's go through this. It's in three parts, and kind of the way we did it in the work session was just going by piece by piece. Retail registr, registration. I believe, well, who is in favor of keep sending it to the county?
I am.
I am.
Okay. And I think we're anonymous. I feel the same way. Cannabis business certification, that's a pretty straightforward one. That just means that Aaron or somebody from staff double checks when somebody is going to open a business and say, okay, yes, this is an area that isn't worth other zoning registrations, which we've got that taken care of. We're not, we're not as gun-shy about those as you are. But just to make sure that that all jives with our registration. So I am fine with that. I have no issues with that.
I agree.
Okay. And then temporary cannabis events. I think we had a little bit more discussion about this two weeks ago. For me, it makes a lot of sense with, and with everything that we've done with cannabis. And kind of to Dave's point earlier, like, we are setting up these guardrails. Right now, it's a snapshot in time, and it is always something that we can lessen, change, amend, edit, or completely do away with. So I think that the cannabis event regulations are very much in line, especially with the changes that you requested two weeks ago, as far as making them align with what we're looking at with our zoning restrictions of not having an event within 500 feet of a daycare, and 1,000 feet of a school, with the exception of downtown in our central business district. Anybody else want to opine?
Go ahead.
I'm still concerned about this ordinance as written, that it will limit the ability of cannabis dispensaries to properly operate on their own premises if they're in a grandfathered location. However, in interest of forwarding the ordinance prior to the licenses being issued, I'm willing to table that discussion until that situation arises.
Okay. I'm just trying to think, so I, I don't think, you know, like, we're kind of at the starting gates for this.
Yeah.
So I don't think we have a grandfathered...
We don't. Which is, but I'm saying that as it's written, you know, because we're talking about what does this look like when we have 12,500 people? What does this look like when we have, you know?
12,500 and one.
Yeah, sorry, 12,500 and one. As it's written right now, it does not take in, the event ordinance does not take into account a situ, the completely predictable situation in which a cannabis dispensary is already operating, and a preschool or school is, moves into the buffer around that building. Because as it's written right now, what would happen is that they would no longer be able to hold any events on their premises, including inside their own building. And I'm concerned about that, but that's not a situation we're dealing with right now. And I would like to have something in place before licenses are issued, so I'm willing to table that until we run into that issue.
All right. Kristi?
You know, we've talked about this extensively, and I think this is a good starting point and jumping point for us to go through. We did the moratorium already, and then here we go. The, I've talked about this before. I think the OCM office at the state has failed us. They, I'm going to say it one more time.
I've heard this from her, so when you say smiling and nodding.
Yes, because they put this out, they, they approved this, they made it legal, and then left us with nothing. And then dropped the bomb on us, and here we go, trying to figure it out all on our own. I'm happy to go with what we have talked about, knowing that in the beginning, we said, okay, great, we're going to let the state take care of this, and the state's going to tell us what to do, and then that never happened. They can't keep staff in their offices, they can't figure out what they're doing from one day to the next. So right now, I think it is unfortunately up to us to do this, and without as much help from the state legislature as I was hoping. And I think, again, it is something that can be reviewed later, as the world kind of works itself into this a little bit further.
They have a new director. I think it was announced the day after we met.
What? When?
A little less than two weeks ago.
Are they still being sued by everyone?
No, but everything you said, and, we're the 26th state, or 26 other states have done this, so why are we reinventing the wheel? Why isn't there a little bit more collaboration and say, we like what Wisconsin's doing, let's take these parts. We like what Colorado's doing, let's take this. And then kind of maybe spin it 15 degrees to make it applicable to our state, and then it shouldn't be that hard in my mind's eye.
Yep.
Lauren?
No concerns or questions, really just a comment of, I share disappointment, frustration, that it's a mandate, and it's also a mandate with no funding. But at least we are, we know what we're doing here in the city of Carver, so.
Sorry, help me understand. What's the mandate without any funding?
Well, and I don't, like, the funding might be a little bit of a stretch, but that's more with our previous discussions, like, as far as the zoning. I don't think it's really going to cost us a lot to put out that ordinance for the zoning, or, you know, tonight's meeting. I mean, but it's just that tone of the mandate.
And the staff, is it like the staff time it takes to go do this now, or?
Um, I mean, I don't, it's not, it's not like a line item in our budget, but it's just that overall feeling of, just my frustration of, that was, that was something that was more brought up in the, for our actual zoning.
All right. We have two motions that are needed. Dave, can you talk us through that second one? Because
Sure.
I don't think it's going to be an issue, but we need to have...
Yep. Of course, Mayor. So the, the ordinance is obviously the first motion that you would approve if you are in favor of the ordinance. The second is a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance. It requires four votes. We only have four council members here tonight. Excuse me. What I would tell the council is, I've said this before, but obviously, when you're approving the summary resolution, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to be in favor of the ordinance. It's just, it saves the city money on publication. I've seen a lot of ordinances pass three to two. And then I would, I always encourage the two nays to vote for the summary publication, because the city has to publish the ordinance one way or the other. Excuse me. It's just really expensive to publish the entire text of it. So.
Yes, that's exactly what I was...
I'm teeing you up to say. Thank you.
Okay. Then there are a couple motions that we need at this point.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 01-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Carver City Code pertaining to cannabis and hemp businesses.
Motion by Councilmember Mauck. Second by Councilmember Pascoe. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll go on to the next one then, and I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 103-25, authorizing publication of ordinance 01-2025 by title and summary.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mauck, a second by Councilmember Pascoe. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go home. Okay. What we are all waiting for, parking and vehicle operation regulations. And thank you guys for your patience. I know you've been here through the work session. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So again, for those maybe that are watching or hear, so this is what I'd call like the conversation starter phase of any time you look at legislation or an ordinance in this instance. So it's not my intent or staff's intent to represent that this is a, a day-in and day-out call, calls from residents. So I would say literally it's maybe one every other month. And there, you know, for the parking issues, these are primarily, I would call editorial comments from residents related to their viewpoint that a certain condition is of nuisance, whether it's visual or some other type. So that could be a visual, it could be, you know, we've had instances where semis have parked in municipal parking lots, you know, and then they'll leak oil, or there's been an instance where a vehicle's parked on a city street and has a flat tire because it hasn't moved. So the spectrum of what is acceptable can range from resident to resident. And so this is kind of the, the process to decide whether or not you want something. So if something gets asked enough, not through any kind of scientific means, I'll just kind of, kind of make note of it. And so there was enough interest where I thought, well, I should check in instead of just kind of repeatedly telling our member of our team, we don't have an ordinance that regulates that. So this is kind of a, a check-in and check-up. So I wasn't at the last work session, so just kind of, some of this might be a repeat. But we had enough resident requests on a number of parking and vehicle operation issues, that we wanted some city council review and feedback. So the city attorney reviewed that code, kind of our current code language, or lack of code language. And the council conceptually discussed some options related to on-street and municipal parking lots, as well as some restrictions related to engine braking. So I'll, I'll skip to that one, because I think that's probably the most, that's probably, I would call that the, in air quotes, the easiest. The county sheriff's office recommended some changes to engine braking. A lot of people refer to it as jake braking, that, but that's a specific type of, of brake. And so through the city attorney's office, and the county attorney's office, and then the sheriff's office, there's some language in the code related to prohibiting excessive vehicle noise. And that's, a copy of that's in the ordinance. We did, there was a petition of residents from Oak Tree and Lislewood, Glen. We ended up having a neighborhood meeting with them and the sheriff's office in the late fall.
It was October.
Yeah, Councilmember Mauck was there. And so just some low-hanging fruit things that we thought we could do. But, so that's kind of the genesis of the vehicle noise ordinance. Unmissable parking lots, the predo, predominantly, where I'm talking about complaints at Carver Station and Community Park, where residents will call and say, a semi or a car has been parked overnight. Every so often, we have issues related to cars being parked there for a longer period of time, which causes some maintenance issues, whether it's plowing or sweeping. Informally, city staff has provided, so I'd say permission to park overnight. So last winter, we had a resident, I think living in the bluffs, they were going on a camping trip. They were going to park their camper on the street, but recognizing that we do have a city ordinance for if it's two inches or more of snow, they asked if they could park their camper in Carver Station during that period. So we allowed it. So what, one of the things that I would recommend is that we memorialize that so that everybody knows, because if we kind of go based on, like, if you know to ask, then it's not really an equitable situation. So kind of a, the conversation starter here is restricting overnight parking in municipal lots from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., but providing a reprieve for overnight parking through that time, from the 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. in the Broadway Lot and the Third Street West Lot. So we're not requiring folks park there. I would say, you know, and that was mentioned earlier in the meeting, the city doesn't have any exemptions in the current code for winter parking. So whether you have off-street parking available, or a garage, or a driveway, there's nothing in the ordinance that gives anybody any permission to park if there's two inches or more of snow on the street until the street is plowed curb-to-curb. So if the council wants to address that, they certainly can, but that's not in the code. So again, part of the conversation starter, that overnight parking is allowed during city-owned, in city-owned, all city-owned parking lots between the Friday and Monday of steamboat days. It's allowed at all times in that Broadway Lot, which is where Getaway is, and the Hartley's, the old fire station, during snow emergencies, as well as the Third Street West Lot. And then getting to that special permission, overnight parking may be allowed in, in any city-owned parking lot with written permission by the city due to extenuating circumstances. So that, you know, in that, in that instance, then we give them permission, write a note to the patrol staff from the sheriff's office, that would give them permission to kind of, as a workaround to the winter parking issue, if that's kind of a way that you'd want to address people that don't have as many traditional, traditional availability of off-street parking. But if you want to get into the larger topic of just, you know, off-street parking during snow events, we can certainly get into that. And then I'm just going to hit the long-term parking thing and then open it up for council discussion. But the, this again is a, what I'd call like, you know, a nuisance call. I would, you know, I would say that, you know, there was a time when we could call a resident and say, hey, we got a complaint about this vehicle parked. But in almost, in almost every instance, they'll follow up and say, like, can you show me in the ordinance where I have to do this? And so we just have, in my experience, we've passed that point where we can do that. And we, so I've advocated to the team, let's not ask people to do things that we can't require them to do, because then we're, I think we're abusing our power. We should only enforce things that are in the ordinance. I recognize that the council had a discussion about three consecutive days, so like, not moving the vehicle. Again, part of my conversation thread that I would offer, I worked with the city attorney and asked to provide a draft that put it at seven consecutive days. So that means that vehicle doesn't move at all. Again, you just have the option to say, you know what, staff, this isn't a problem. We're going to keep it as it is. But from my vantage point, the difference between three days and seven days, if you move it to seven, it takes away kind of the weekend parking stuff, extended family stays, et cetera. But I understand, just like this issue, there are going to be many points of view. So again, our desire tonight is to get the additional council feedback. If you reach a point where you kind of put a draft together, that you have some kind of defined regulations, you know, we would put it into the February newsletter and say that this is going to be considered for action at the February 18th council meeting. But if you need more time and it spreads into March and April, that's quite all right as well. These are certainly not urgent issues. You can certainly piecemeal it to and say, well, we'll deal with the excessive, or the engine braking ordinance, we'll prepare that, but we want more time. We want to get more feedback on the parking ordinances. You're welcome to do that as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Just, could I, just for you guys, for your sake, Brent kind of went over it, and I mentioned it a little bit at the beginning, but this was a work session item. So there will be no vote. We are making no final decisions on this tonight. There's still time for your voices to be heard. Generally, in work sessions, what we do is we're just initially getting information on topics and kind of discussing it amongst ourselves. So we will be opining, we will be sharing what we think is best, we will be sharing what we've heard. But again, there's not going to be a decision made tonight here, because this is a work session item that we just didn't have enough time for in our work session tonight. So I just want to give that caveat, because it's tricky, just the way that we're kind of shoehorning it into our agenda here tonight. So, all right.
I was going to just ask you for procedural...
I was going to just ask you for procedural clarification, and you just did it.
Wow. The same way, Brent. Okay, you know, I think Brent kind of stated it very accurately, that starting with prohibiting excess vehicle noise, when we spoke about this two weeks, I don't know that anybody had any concerns with it. It's certainly something that I support, and a little bummed that we didn't have things written in a way that it could be enforced previously, but whatever we need to do to get that cleaned up, I am all in favor of.
Same.
Go ahead.
I agree. Though I would like to say that I'd like to see these three issues separated out when it comes time to vote.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll definitely have to do it.
Okay. Yeah. You know, I'm, there's a little bit of, I understand the engine braking issue. We've had a, you know, we've had a pit here for a long time, the gravel pit, right? These trucks have been doing this for a long time, but it looks different here now. And adding in the roundabout, which was necess, which was necessary with, you know, the new businesses going in the other side of the street, it's kind of changed the ways of the world. If that roundabout hadn't been there, I probably would have said, you know what, that road's been the same way for fifty years, and that gravel pit's been there just as long, so, you know, buyer beware. But we've changed the, we've changed the environment by adding that roundabout in, they're having to brake differently now when they come around that to get through it as though, or as compared to when it was just a straightaway going down to the Mueller's Pit. I also, as Brent was saying, we were in that resident meeting in October and heard some of their, their issues with it. And then, when the county had realigned the road and widened it and did all the work there, or not realigned it, but sorry, widened it and did the construction there, they actually removed a number of berms that are along there. So, they are, they are actually suffering from more noise than when they bought, when it was built, than when even before, when engines could jake break down that road, because those berms are also missing now. So, I think it's something that, while I, I feel for the wear on the brakes and the cost that it will be when you can't use your compression and engine braking, but I think it's unnecessary at this point. So, with that long, with that long paragraph there for you, I'm in.
Okay. So, I think, and again, this is not a final decision, we would take a vote like we did for the previous item, but it seems pretty clear of our direction. So, I don't think I have heard a request for any changes in that one. Let's move on to municipal parking lots. Does anybody want to go first on that one?
I have a question of clarification. So, from what I understand, given the example that you gave Brent, under twenty-seven-three, that's the permitting, pre-approval for overnight parking in the lots, that would include long-term parking more than twenty-four hours if necessary?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Kristi?
I'm just, hold on, I'm just checking my notes that Lori wants to go.
Lori, do you want to go?
I would like more clarification on the writing for approval to park overnight. Express written permission of the city manager. I don't know what it should look like, but I don't want us to be in a situation where somebody said, oh, I sent it to you Fri-, you know, or I sent it in Friday afternoon, I left my car there Saturday. You know, maybe, I don't know if it's something we could just do a form on the website, just like submit a question?
Mayor and Council, I guess I don't think that would be written permission, I mean, it has to come from the city.
Okay.
So, just making the request wouldn't get somebody there. We try to be, I think, intentionally vague about when those situations it might make sense, because I think staff can appropriately use its discretion, you know, for example, like when Brent talked about somebody who was going to be out of town and they didn't have a place to park their RV, they were worried about snow emergencies, that kind of a thing. That, that's one example, I mean, there's other examples where, you know, maybe there is a situation where there's a tree removal project happening, so part of the street is closed, or another city project, and street parking isn't going to be available for a short period of time. And I think those residents might want to proactively ask for permission to use a city parking lot that's close to their home to park vehicles during those kinds of circum- and those are the kinds of things I envision.
Okay.
And I think Brent envisions that too.
Yeah, there is another.
Another way.
Sure.
What happens if somebody doesn't wait to get their written permission? What, do we have teeth in here? Do we ticket them? Do we tow them? Do we?
They'd be in violation of the ordinance and could be ticketed. I don't think the city's ever towed vehicles. I mean, it, under state towing laws, we could do that with certain violations, but we've never been.
I'm not in favor of that, but I'm just asking like to want to.
Yeah, the only, we've towed when someone has like literally abandoned the vehicle in the parking lot.
Yeah, and for what it's worth.
I feel like the maybe the last, like, year and a half, there was.
Believe our parking.
One.
Our parking violations are, so they're petty misdemeanor, they're not a crime.
Okay.
And the fine is, I want to say forty or fifty dollars. I believe the council puts that in its fee schedule, and we changed it to fifty, fifty bucks recently, which is, you can go up to three hundred on a petty misdemeanor, but I think the point is, is we're trying to, if you're trying to prohibit activity, you know, there's a, there's a number of parking viol-, or prohibitions in your code right now, that if you're trying to prohibit, usually the threat of getting a ticket and having to pay a fine is a big enough pain in the butt for people that they will follow the ordinance. So, I probably enough teeth to it, but I know the city hasn't towed vehicles, that's not a common practice.
Okay. All right, yeah, and sorry, I didn't check in the.
Yeah, and I would offer, like, if they didn't have the approval, then they would, it'd be treated as a violation.
Okay. All right. Nope, that was one thing I just wanted to give comment and my feedback, but now I see it different. And I also really do like the mention of for steamboats, that exception, and I also like naming the actual city-owned parking lots. So, I think there's a lot less up for interpretation. So, all's I'm really seeing is what I do like about the language. I'm not really strong still on what this whole section, just because I see the pros and cons of it for the greater of the city, but yet, that how some people might feel really inconvenienced, so.
The municipal lot part?
Or, oh, sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Yeah.
Municipal is part three.
Did you find yours? Yeah, I did. So, when we're looking at, if we can go to twenty-seven, it's the highlighted section, and we're talking about the overnight parking restrictions. So, we have in, right off that, says no motor vehicle shall be parked in any city-owned parking lot between the hours of two AM and five AM. Now, when we talk about city lots, we know that the central business district operates very differently from other parts of town. So, what I envisioning though, is that we also don't want to, we want to discourage drinking and driving. We know that a number of our establishments down here are establishments that serve alcohol. So, for me, looking at that Third Street Lot, if people wanted to leave their vehicle overnight rather than drive it home, to me, if you say, okay, you can't park here, all that does is push it back out into the street, and, you know, one of the street parking, what's, what's the difference really? We're just, you're parking overnight because you're making a choice not to drive out of here, which is fine, but to say you can't park in the Third Street Lot, but back your car out now and go park it in, on Third Street, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, I guess for me, I would, we're looking at possible, you know, I don't know, I think that the Third Street Lot and possibly Broadway should be left open to parking all the time. It is a city lot, it is in the CBD district, we have different establishments here, and I think it's encouraging for people to not feel that they should get in their vehicle and drive, and are making smarter choices by leaving them overnight in some small municipal lots downtown.
I would support that as well.
I could support that, and we could socialize it with the bar owners and staff of like, if you see somebody who might need some help, like, I'm not a lot if they can get their, have somebody else get their car to the Third Street Lot.
Or if it's already there, you don't have to think, you have to move it in an impaired state to save fifty dollars, right? So. And then, my other, let's see.
Quick question. So, it sounds like at least the Third Street Lot, I assume that's used by patrons of, of the downtown establishments, they'll park in that lot.
So is Broadway.
And they'll walk around the bar, that's what, that was my other question, is the Broadway one also used by those?
So, basically, the ones we call out for the snow emergencies as well.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are customers that are frequently parking in those lots.
Do you think we should just, again, like, not to make this Nathan's difficult, but just make it one of those two, because hopefully there aren't three dozen people?
Right, but I also think that not everyone here who lives in Carver who comes here, right? So, I think that maybe the word, like, that those are, because we really think, that's what, seven, what is it, five, six spots in that one? It's less than we had originally intended. Down there is, I mean, you've got the part in front of, like, the Getaway, which is technically, which is technically considered on-street parking, isn't it? It's the ones in front of the PU building that are actually considered the municipal ones.
Well, it's the whole thing, is.
It is the whole thing? Okay. I'm fine with both. I don't know that they're going to be packed full every weekend, but I think it's a nice alternative to discourage driving.
In my mind's eye, it just, if you're not from Carver, especially, the distinction between the street in front of Lisa's and the other side of the street and the PU building might be a little bit difficult. So, and again, like, just thinking this through and thinking out loud, if we say the Third Street Lot, and maybe we can print up posters that can go in the bars, you know, temporarily at least while it first starts out, and we can communicate it with staff at the establishments that sell, that have liquor licenses downtown, let's say, if you have somebody who's bad.
Yeah, I mean, we have the Getaway down there now too, though, that also serves on weekends, so I can see people parking there. I mean, people park on the side streets all the time, and the cars are there till the morning, and you know what, I don't care, because at least I know that they got, they made a right choice. So, for me, parking, we have two empty lots that are adjacent to four establishments down here, and they're not overly side, you know.
This isn't the hill I'm going to die on.
Yeah. No, no, this is what, yeah. Work session, our council meeting is four, it's kind of hatching some of these. So, to me, it seems like nitpicking from one to the other, and like, it would be easier.
I'm looking at a map, but I don't know exactly where the Third Street.
That little one across from Harvey's where you go across the bridge.
The window here.
Dave DeTolles, right next to Dave DeTolles.
Okay.
For everyone who knows where Dave DeTolles is.
If it was, we're going to walk over there tonight after the council meeting.
The city of San Antonio.
Yeah. So, if you're parking on the one-way by Harvey's.
Okay. The one-way that's not open, go over the.
Yes.
Bridge on the gravel, and we should take like an immediate right.
Yes.
Okay.
Right there.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, is that it?
Let's see here. This may, I'm on another, let's see, this might be another section, let me find this header to make sure. So, for this parking, so right above that, we've got the Broadway Street overnight parking restrictions, we've got two to six AM. No, on number twenty-six, Broadway Street overnight parking restrictions, that's two to six.
Oh, the existing.
Yeah, the existing one. So, is this twenty-seven meant to also get rid of twenty-six then? Because it's, this is parking lots, and this is.
So, that, yeah, so that's related to, there's signs out throughout.
Yeah, that say two to six.
Right. So, that's, this doesn't touch that.
Okay. So, again, the, I'd like the council to just think about this for a second. So, you can't park on Broadway overnight if you're going to visit an establishment, but you can park up Third Street, and you can park up Fourth Street, and you can park up Main Street. So, why is this, now, snow emergency doesn't matter, that's two inches everywhere, but if you can, if you're not supposed to leave your park on this, or excuse me, leave your vehicle on this street, it has the businesses facing, but you can, instead, when you go, you just park on Fourth or Third or Main Street. What's the difference? I feel like we're telling you, you can't park there, but go ahead and go around the corner, you can park there, so what's.
The reason Broadway is in there is because we have some dedicated street sweeping. We try to hit Broadway, kind of the central business district, so if cars park there on a regular basis overnight, that's going to create an issue.
Tell me how often we like randomly street sweep, so I know. Like, is it every week? Is it twice a week? Is it once a month?
I would say like once a month.
Okay.
Probably through the months of like April to November-ish, I'd say. Something like that, okay.
That's when it's not.
Right, when there's a snow emergency.
Yeah, when there's snow.
So, it just seems a little arbitrary to me to say you can't park on this one, but you can park on the side ones. If you, if, if the street sweeping is that big of an issue, again, I'm not going to, this is my hill, I'm not going to die on. I just feel like, why are we saying not this street, but all the ones that connect to it are mine? So, I don't know if council has any other comments on that.
I agree with you in both your, this is not the hill I'm going to die on, but it also seems arbitrary. I'm a hundred percent in, in agreement with that.
Well, the council, I mean, it's your code, so you're welcome to take it out. It's just there, just, as the interim public services director, speaking on behalf of like Paul Schultz of the team, I, you know, without having Paul, Paul would be a strong advocate for keeping that in place. To my understanding, it hasn't caused any issues, but again, this is your code, you represent the people of the city. So, if you want it to be, look and feel a different way, that's your prerogative.
I'm just looking, like you said, for feedback on that one. I feel super strongly about it, however, the street sweeping example resonates with me, and if we want to keep our central business district looking nice and spick and span, and, you know, maybe we get more information on how often that street sweeping happens during the summer months, if it is once a week, if it's every other week, you know, I think, you know, imagining more cars that you'd have to go around, and you know what it looks like? When a street sweeper goes through, you can kind of leave a little, it's like.
I'll get, I'll get, I'll ask Paul off when we do it.
Yeah. Lori, did you?
No, I, darn question on it. I don't, I'd like us just to be consistent, and if there's a question, why is this put in here, and then just have any other time to take it out.
Well, if we could get a little more information from Paul on why he, you think, you think he would prefer to keep it in here, and if you would, you know, you can obviously add your notes of why you think, and then we can talk about it the next time.
Again, just thinking out loud, if we do away with that twenty-six Broadway Street overnight parking restrictions, then I think we wouldn't have to allow parking on the Third Street Lot.
Yeah, then it wouldn't matter, there'd be plenty of places if you.
Other places, yeah.
Decided not to drive out of downtown, yeah.
Okay, my kind of three quick things are maybe going in reverse order. So, twenty-seven, that last paragraph under three, we kind of list all of the parks in there, but I don't think, and I'm double-checking, so I don't misspeak, but Riverside Park isn't in there. And I know that there isn't a big, like, formal parking lot in there, kind of with the exception at the end by the boat launch, but you would imagine we probably don't want folks parking in there overnight, with the exception of the camping spaces.
Actually, I have to disagree. The, there's a lot of people who go out fishing, and they will leave and park overnight and fish overnight in the river.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, I had no idea, okay. I just, I think that potentially leaves a different issue and a vulnerability there, but I'm just thinking out loud, that would potentially then be too hard to place, I think, if we've got folks who are there, and then between folks who are like, oh, I'm camping, but I'm parked by the archery field.
Bernie, would you like to see maybe just like time, like a seventy-two hour?
Not, well, is that park not closed at ten o'clock like the rest of them?
All the parks are closed at ten.
But the boat launch is utilized?
It may be, if the park is closed, parks in the by-city code are closed at ten PM and open at sunrise.
Okay. If you're keeping track, that's the second hill, I don't necessarily, I'm just thinking, just keeping track of that. Let's see. We talk about snow emergencies in twenty-seven number two, but I looked in our snow section of the parking ordinance, and we don't say snow emergency. So, for consistency, I would like for that to mirror what we say in there, and it's the language of it. Anytime after two or more inches of snow has accumulated on a other public street or alley, and then it kind of goes into a little bit more detail. So, I just, I don't want to say snow emergency if we don't call it a snow emergency anywhere else. And then, my only other thing, and I, you know, again, to the parks, if the parks close at ten o'clock, if we say there's no parking from two until five, and I think this would require kind of putting a little bit more detail in this ordinance that we're talking about, but if a park doesn't close, if a park closes at ten and we're saying no parking until two, I don't want to leave that window of four hours to be open, because, you know, when I'm driving past Community Park, when I'm driving past Carver Station. I don't wanna leave that window of four hours to be open, because, you know, when I'm driving past Community Park, when I'm driving past, um, Carver Station, it is eleven-thirty and there are cars still in there. So I would almost like to see the no parking hours for parks and for Carver Station, um, to be a little bit more like ten-thirty until five AM, or maybe even eleven if we wanna.
My concern with Carver Station is that we use it for Twins, State Fair, Renaissance Festival. Yep.
Okay.
And I was just thinking the same thing for like Community Park, 'cause certainly, I know that, I know people who have like, oh, we'll meet you there, they leave a car, they go to dinner somewhere, they go do whatever event they're going to the.
Yeah, but that's kind of the point of this ordinance, these are not parking lots.
True.
Yeah, I think, Mayor Council, I think it depends on what, if the council, what, what your intent is. If you wanna just preclude this overnight parking situation, people are leaving their cars and getting in the next day, what we have here works. But if you're trying to literally keep people out of those parking lots, even during hours that the parks are closed, um, I think something more specific is, is necessary. I mean, um, again, it kind of boils down to what you wanna do from an intent standpoint, and how you, how you wanna govern those parking lots.
Makes me nervous having too many different little things here when we're talking on this level. Because, again, with the Twins or the Renaissance with us coming up from there, we did certainly want that to still happen.
And that's a good point about those, but I'm thinking more specifically for the parks. Again, we're not wanting a park and ride, and if you know that you can park until two AM, then you can meet at Carver Station, drop somebody's car off, everybody car pulls to the X for the wild gamer, for the concert or whatever, and then you come back and still get it, and you're still easily within that.
You know, I think for, for me, the way this is written, the two to five works. We already know the parks are closed at, at ten. If people are running around in the parks, the law enforcement certainly has the opportunity to say something.
Think it would be a little bit easier for the policing on that? If it was like, makes it a little bit more black and white, there's a car there, is there somebody messing around in the restrooms, you know? Yeah, to worry about vandalism happening on the playground.
Somebody else, I don't know that according, I'm gonna come to a.
Does anybody feel strongly about it?
I am in favor of keeping it the way it is, two to five. I have a lot of visibility to Community Park, 'cause I live so close there. And, um, I don't have a concern, there are definitely times where it's like, whoa, that's kind of here at a weird time. But I think it's a nice, like, I don't, it's not really an amenity, but it's convenient for the occasional car pulling, or it's, it's not, I don't see that it's doing any harm. Um, and yet, if we find that there is a trend that we're not in favor, we can always revisit it. But for the part of consistency and knowing that more the, um, Carver Station lot has valid reasons for being used, um, up until two in the morning, I would keep all the city-owned from, um, start that no parking at two AM.
Kayla, did you have anything?
No, I agree, I, um, I prefer it written as-is. I don't feel like we have an ongoing problem with the parks, um, and their lots. If that's something that comes up in the future, that's definitely something we can revisit. But this serves, this ordinance as it's written serves its purpose, addresses the concerns that we've been talking about.
All right, long-term street parking.
I have two more things.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're back to talking about.
Yes, we're, it's gonna be, this is, yes. If we can go up to number seven, which we're talking about stop signs or signals, and that is gonna be under forty-six dash fifty-one, so it's right in the beginning here. So it's stop signs or signals, so it says within thirty feet of the approach of a flashing beacon, stop sign or traffic and control signal located on the side of the roadway. So this is prohibitions on stopping and parking. If I think right now, if you're at gazebo park and you pull up where the bump out is, you are not thirty feet from that stop sign. So I'm gonna need to understand where this is, what, is this just old language that we've had in here, or why this is in here? Because most of the places downtown, and I get it's the approaching one, not the one behind you, wouldn't even, where we've allowed parking right now, wouldn't even qualify with this thirty feet, so.
I noticed that too, but what if there's a parking stall if it's painted? Like, I think this is more just don't park it, don't just find your own parking spot unless there's, you know, stripes when you're within thirty feet of whether that be a stop sign or flashing beacon or.
Yeah, I, but it doesn't say that, right?
Correct.
So I'm just confused, 'cause like I said, I can name all the bump outs that are right down here downtown, where the stop sign's right here, and you, that the city put it in the van, you can park right up to it, so this doesn't even work in that.
Yeah, we're not, Councilmember Mock, we're not prepared to, the only areas that we address were in yellow.
Okay.
I'd have to connect with, uh, the city engineer. I know there are a number of engineering standards related to site distances, you know, and, um, as I think most people know in this room, there's some creative, like, parking elements, and especially in the downtown, that aren't straight, but aren't really regulated, and so, um, I would be irresponsible to try to guess on.
I'd like to hear what the engineer says. And I wasn't thinking that way, I was thinking, I know at one time, I should've known this, when my kids are in driver's ed.
Yep, okay, and at one last, and revisit a little more information, trying to figure out why that says that, because we're not even in compliance right now with, with it, so if the ordinance needs to change.
When you say we're not in compliance, like, say, more about, I don't understand.
Because you can park up to the stop sign, gazebo park, within maybe ten feet of that bump out, not thirty.
Well, you, you know, it might, you might not be able to, it's just not, uh, like, the curb's not painted yellow, doesn't necessarily mean that you can park there.
Okay, yeah, let's talk to the engineer.
Yeah, I'll give you an exam, I'll give you an example, like, you can't, like, you can't park in, in front of someone's driveway, but it's not painted yellow.
No, these, I, I, I get where you're trying to go with it, but this, when you're looking at what we have set up for parking in the downtown area, this thirty feet doesn't comply with that, it's in, so. Um, my very, my last one, um, under fifteen, when we were talking about the parking, the campers on the street, and then for more than forty-eight consecutive hours, my mind, because I remember talking at length about seventy-two hours, not forty-eight, did it, did it not get changed in the ordinance, or how did we vote? Because for me, I know I was all in favor of setting two hours, 'cause I thought if you come in on Friday, you've got Saturday, Sunday, Monday, that's the three days. And, 'cause I, I remember really arguing hard that forty-eight was not, was too short. Can we look back somehow?
Yeah, I think this predates your time on the council.
We just talked, but we just talked about the.
I, I could be wrong, but I think, I think that was just a argument that you were in the minority on. 'Cause I remember having the discussion, we, 'cause we changed a lot of these things, this was two years ago, I wanna say.
Okay, yep.
Um, and that one didn't, didn't change.
It didn't.
And, yeah, and I think, I remember the discussion, but, um, it stayed the way it was for various reasons, I don't know why.
Okay, if that's our recollection, great, okay.
But again, I, we can look back. We, we had gone through and made a number of different changes back in twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Couple of years ago, yep, okay, thanks, Dave. Okay, that's it.
All right, let's talk about long-term street parking. Kayla, why don't you go first?
Yeah, so as it's written, I, um, I have a number of concerns. The biggest one right now is that I don't think that any ordinance written like this is going to get to the issue that we are trying to address with complaints from citizens. Um, the reason why is because if you know that this ordinance exists and you are using long-term street parking, you're just gonna put a reminder in your phone to go move all of your cars twenty feet every week. Um, it doesn't, it unnecessarily restricts the parking of our residents without addressing any of the concerns that are causing this ordinance to be brought up, and that's concerning to me.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Um, when you say that it's not getting to the concerns of the residents, how is it missing?
Yeah, so it was my understanding that this got brought up in, because, and Brent, you can correct me on this. We occasionally, you said once or twice a month, we get a call from somebody saying that, you know, this, this vehicle that my, that belongs to my neighbor has been sitting here for a week, ten days, whatever, and it hasn't moved. Um, and I, I don't like it there, I want it to move. And I, I have, what I see happening is that these vehicles, when that happens, these individuals are not going to move their parking elsewhere, they're not going to change their parking plan. What they're going to do is they're going to say, okay, well, let's see here, I can leave it here for six and a half days, and then I'm just gonna move it ten feet down the road. Um, and then in six and a half days, I'm just gonna move it ten feet back. And so it's creating unnecessary restrictions on our residents without actually addressing the reason why we're considering it in the first place. It's not solving that problem.
No, go ahead.
I, I can go, um, I agree with Kayla, um, but I also don't know the solution.
I don't either.
I am the, my family's the worst culprits of this. Um, because we have two students who have their license, my husband's self-employed, with an Econoline painting band with ladders, so, um, you know, we're not at a stage where we have a multi-generation, but if we added that, you know, we, we do run out of parking stalls. Um, and I just feel like it's really an aesthetics thing. Um, and I don't live in a neighborhood that has, um, covenants or.
HOAs or anything like that.
HOAs, so I don't, um, but I feel like this ordinance would give people, they would find loopholes. Um, though, I do believe, and I just wanna confirm, that if somebody had a vehicle for eight days that had, that had expired tabs or wasn't running, is there something that gets done?
Yeah, if, if a vehicle's inoperable, it's a, it's a, considered a public nuisance, and the city has a, um, a process to, um, what's the word, mitigate or abate that, yeah.
There's a junk vehicle provision in state law, the problem with those is that you have to prove it's inoperable, and cities, how do you prove it's inoperable without getting into the vehicle and trying to turn the key? Um, usually if a vehicle sits somewhere long enough, it's indicative of the fact that it might be inoperable, but you still, it's hard to prove that. Um, so, again, I mean, I think this, to Brent's point, and what we've all been talking about, this, this boils down to the council's discretion, whether this is a good policy. I think from, just anecdotally, what I've heard for rationale behind these types of ordinances in other communities is it kind of tries to address a lot of things. One, um, to the street sweeping point, I mean, if you have a vehicle parked somewhere long enough, it's gonna create, um, a barrier, or some, it's gonna, it's being, be in the way of city operations, and sometimes cities' staff is doing street sweeping or plowing. I mean, we have a snow emergency or a snow provision about, about that. But there are other things that cities need to kind of get in and out of their streets for. Um, there's also issues with if a vehicle sits somewhere long enough and isn't moved, I mean, um, it could leak fluids, and that creates problems with your streets, and if those fluids go into storm sewers. I mean, if you're putting vehicles that are in certain conditions out in places and letting them sit, that can be a problem too. Um, and then I think it's just generally speaking, it's, it's, the point is, um, and I certainly take no position on whether this is right or wrong, I, I don't mean to, uh, I hope it doesn't seem like that, it's totally the council's prerogative. But another thing that cities like to try to use these ordinances for, um, is to just discourage people from using a city street for something it isn't, and that, and one, one thing it isn't is a, is a parking lot, um, or at least a permanent parking lot. I think that a lot of people do need street parking, there's good, good reason for it. Um, but when people start taking advantage of that, usually it's, it's one or two people in a community that ruin it for others, and that's no different than why we adopt a lot of ordinances. Um, and so, again, I, I take zero position on whether it's right or wrong, but from the standpoint of, I think, what the council's having here, which is a lot of good discussion and debate about what, what may be good for your community, um, um, I, I just think it's, uh, something that Brent rightfully brought to your attention based on some of the complaints that have been, um, happening, this isn't new, it's probably been happening for years. And to his point, they can go out and ask a resident, hey, we received a complaint about this, why is this car been out there for two or three weeks? Um, and then they'll say, well, what's wrong with that? And then I think staff rightfully has to say, well, I guess nothing is wrong with that, but we're just, we just wanna, you know, check in because we've received complaints about it. I mean, I think to his point, if we're gonna respond to calls in that way, we should have an ordinance in place. And if not, then if the council decides not to have an ordinance in place, I think the appropriate reaction from staff will be when those people do call, nothing prohibits them from parking out there. Um, so it's really, you know, you wanna weigh the different policy rationale behind the two options, or I guess the two options and anywhere in between, and decide what you wanna do. Um, but that's just my, my two cents.
No, I appreciate it, it's good.
Yeah, I, for example, I live in a community that, um, every night, we can't park overnight in our city, and it's a pain in the butt, but I think they, I don't think they enforce it that much, and if I have, if we have, you know, guests overnight, for whatever reason, um, we tell them to move their car into the driveway, and if they don't do it, it's happened, our neighbors, it's happened, they've never been ticketed. But that's a problem too, I mean, if you're gonna have something, you should enforce it. Um, so I think what we're looking for is direction from staff, uh, or from the council on what you want, so that staff can either enforce it or respond to those residents with a, a more affirmative, there's no problem with this, according to our code, right?
I just, I have one last comment, is, um, I could be open to, for that long-term street parking, to maybe then extending it instead of seven days. Maybe it's ten, maybe it's fourteen, um, maybe that's a, gets us where we want, so, those were my comments.
All right, just a few thoughts from me, if you don't mind if I don't. Yeah, um, so I think we realize that there are absolutely holes, and this isn't the golden ticket solution. Um, in our work session packet from two weeks ago was the email from Commander Woolie that said, yeah, people can move them. We can chop tires and people can move them three feet ahead, and boom, they're in a different spot. Um, so I think we understand, I understand that this is not the be-all, end-all solution. Kayla, my question for you is, we met last Wednesday? And you had indicated that for the survey that you put out.
Yes.
You had changed your mind and had received feedback.
Yeah, so I've received, um, a couple of people, uh, the vast majority of what I've received said that they do not want restrictions. I think I got probably, I mean, I can look it up exactly, but I think I got about fifteen results, three of which were in favor of a restriction, one of which was in favor of forty-eight hours instead of seventy-two, remainder of which were not in favor of restriction. I'm more in favor of it now that it's at seven days. Um, but, and, and I think that I, as we look at possibly longer to deal with abandonment, like, vehicle abandonment issues, that's something that I would consider. But I'm just, the more I, I'm talking to residents one-on-one, the more I'm looking at the, how the streets are being used in the city. I've been driving around the neighborhoods during the days to see who's doing long-term parking, those sorts of things. I don't see this, I, I don't see this as, at a short period of time, being something that's going to be beneficial to the city overall. And I would be happy to provide results of what people have reached out to me with, to the county, I have it on my phone. Or, sorry, not the county, the city, um, I'd be happy to, to pull that up, but, yeah.
Um, okay, I'm struggling with what side of the issue. You're on, 'cause it feels like we're going a little bit of back and forth.
Okay, so, as it's written right now, I don't think it addresses the issues that we're trying to address, and therefore I do not support it. But if we're looking at it to support, to deal with abandon, car abandonment issues or things like that, which would necessarily have a longer window on them, and we set it up for a longer window, I would be more in favor of that.
Um, yeah, so when I'm looking at this, there's a couple of, I'd like to throw a couple of scenarios back. Um, so let's say, so I'm a good neighbor, right, I'm gonna park it from my house.
Is that the part we're trying to believe?
No.
Versus me.
I don't, yeah, I don't care if Lori Sayer parks in front of her old house. Okay, but let's say I take my extended pickup truck with our enclosed trailer, and I come, because I can. And maybe I'm not happy with Lori doing that, so I'm gonna pull it up.
Right in front of my living room.
Right in front of your entire yard. Now, I can leave it there, as long as there's not a snow emergency, so six months, and I can prove it's operational. What happens? Like, there's no recourse, that's my thing, is there's no recourse for things like that. Uh, most people, the majority of people are going to be, hopefully, the good neighbor. The problem is, is we don't have any recourse for the ones that aren't. The problem is, is we don't have any recourse for the ones that aren't, right? So, you know, we've heard and we've talked about different things. The downtown area, the majority of the downtown area has some type of parking space that is off of the street. I know that it's the majority, but I was in the minority at one point. I lived in a house that had literally not even a curb cut. So I understand definitely some of these parking, both sides of this, right? However, again, what is our recourse then for the person who decides to come park in front of Kayla Pascoe's house with a truck and trailer for six months? What do we do?
Yeah, well, my argument would be is that if you're that mad at me that you're gonna do that, every seven days, you're gonna come and move it three feet so that you're still in compliance and still parked in front of my car.
I don't, I don't think that's fair to say, though, because, you know, down here, if we, you know, people park wherever, and this can be in any neighborhood, right? So, we have, at least I park in the, maybe I don't have a big parking space. So now I, you know, one of our, one of our very specific ones that we have is that a truck and trailer down here in the downtown area will park in front of people's homes for weeks at a time, and just park there. And we have some, we have smaller lots down here, so their entire yards are covered by someone's construction truck and trailer. It doesn't move for a week at a time. So, and then there's another one we were talking, I know the gentleman, the... And the crowd had talked about work vehicles. I am all for having your van at your house. I think this, Morgan, will boils down to when people have multiple people living in the home, and there are six vans taking up the cul-de-sac, seven vans taking up the cul-de-sac. So, I don't, again, people parking in front of your own house seems to be not the issue here. And I know Mary had said, that when we talked, she said, well, you can park in front of your house. You can, even with or without this ordinance. You can park in front of your house. That's not going to change either way. So, again, I don't love this. I totally agree, this isn't getting to everything that we're hoping for it to get to. And I don't, I don't have, the same as, I don't have all the answers to say this is what it should look like to make this work best. But it does make me nervous that we have no recourse when there, when we do have that nuisance, when we do have that issue besides having a broken-down vehicle. And I don't know how to rectify that with this ordinance. But I think we do leave ourselves open to issues, and...
If you were to extend it, what's a day you would be, would make sense? Number of days?
I don't know. I don't know that's the number of days that's catching me at seven. I don't think that's it either.
So can I just interject? Yeah, so the conversation that I shared with Brent is when it went from three days to seven days, here's how I imagine it playing out. I'm calling because your trailer is in front of my house. It's been in front of my house for three days, and I've had it. Had it with you, Kristi Mock. And so I call the sheriff's department, and the sheriff's department comes out on day four. They check it, and they're like, yep, we chalk the tires. Now, they can't come out for another three days, right? So we're now on day seven before they can take it in. So I think effectively saying seventy-two hours equals a week, or whatever we say, you have to keep in mind that that's gonna equal double. Because I don't think, and I don't know if, like legally, the sheriff's department can be like, yep, we take your word for it, Ms. Johnson. We're gonna take it, Kristi Mock, you know, like... Because I think, in my mind's eye, if we say twenty-four hours, if we say three weeks, we would have to double it before there's enforcement.
They would not take your word for it because the person who got the ticket would just come in and say, well, yeah, it was there when they saw it the first time, but I had moved it intermittently between then. They just didn't see me move it, and then I put it in a near, close to the same spot. So they, the only way they can enforce is to chalk your tires, which is true. That's not gonna happen until the complaint starts, the process, and that could be on day three, four, five, six, who knows? But then they're gonna have to come out. So if it was a seven-day or a ten-day thing, you're probably not getting a ticket issued until day ten or thirteen or fourteen, depending on when the complaint was made, right?
And we are now opening up these municipal parking lots to overnight parking downtown. So that can alleviate some of the, you know, like, we, some of the apartments that we have, right? Because that is being, we've talked about opening up the third and the Broadway one. So, for me then, have, you know, saying...
Yeah, you're saying that I feel like those are unintended consequences because I don't want, like, hey, can't park on the street for seventy-two hours, so let's be in the municipal parking lot for three weeks.
Well, it keeps it off of the street, then.
Yeah, but the intention, like, that's the unintended consequences. The intention for that was, you've been overserved. You had too much to drink, and it's not safe. Here is a safe haven for twelve hours, or however long it takes you to sober up and come out and get your car. You know, that's the unintended consequences. That's not the intention that we were leaving that open for.
So, then we'll go back to, my biggest one is the recourse of if someone, what happens when that, that person isn't the good person? And they park there for six months in front of someone else's house? Because you could park your van on the other side of the street, you know, in front of your neighbor's house every single day. I don't know. Or six of them. Or Chad has six of them now in there everywhere. So, again, I, I agree that this ordinance isn't quite getting there. I don't, I'm not sure what the recourse is, though, on the flip side.
I have a question for Mr. Merrick. Sometimes when I call some members' garden, did Mr. Perschmann give you any feedback? I'd be really curious.
Yeah.
If he can just, like, really sum things up or kind of...
Not specifically to the parking. I just shared with him that there wasn't gonna be any final action taken, so...
He did, and some of us have changed our opinions in two weeks' time, but I remember him two weeks ago saying something to be sent up. It surprises me that we don't have something like this in place. All right. Final round of comments. Who's got the golden ticket here? What's the solution for this? Because I get it, and I, I would say I'm leaning towards the restriction, but understanding that there are holes and workarounds for it for folks who aren't gonna move their fleet of work vehicles, who aren't going to remove... Kristi's not gonna move her car from in front of your house, you know, like, or she will, but six inches at a time.
It keeps getting smaller, like thirty feet, twenty feet.
Eric's abroad, so I do, I do have a text from him. I don't know if it's appropriate to start reading correspondence from council members at...
Oh, if it's live, like, based on what's happening right now?
No, no, it's from earlier today.
Oh, then, yeah, I think that's fine, and you can share his...
So, "I don't have access to my city email outside the US. I'm fine with extending beyond seventy-two hours for parking, but I like to stress that the ordinance is to provide a mechanism for enforcement should it be needed. Can we extend enforcement language to disallow movement of less than twice the vehicle length to nullify the enforceable time period? Or some other language, or a period of no parking of the same vehicle in short to prevent gaming the ordinance?"
Well, there we go.
He, he saw us go on thirty feet, ten feet.
It was three inches. It was six inches.
And Mayor, what, what, I would add, we've talked about this. I mean, there's not a way to get around that. I mean, because you can't necess, you can move a foot, but you could also say that I went to work and came back and then parked a foot from where I parked before. So, that's from an enforcement perspective, not possible. Law enforcement would hate it. That's why every city out there who prohibits this stuff simply has a limitation. Some cities say you can't park overnight at all. Some say forty-eight hours, some say seventy-two, you know, and some have nothing. But law enforcement is not gonna be interested in setting up surveillance cameras to see if your vehicle moves at all. It's just from, for what we're talking about here, it's not worth, you know, there's cost benefits, all that. So, what I would encourage the council to do is, I guess, decide if you want a restriction, then how long you want it. I know that's what we've been talking about here all night. Maybe it's not something you're prepared to reach a consensus on tonight, and that's okay too, but...
I do want to mention something. So if, if this would go forward, what I, in any shape or form, what I don't want is the example that he uses that, I don't want to put an ordinance in place that's not enforced, right? So, you, you had the example of, in your neighborhood, people do park overnight. They don't really get a ticket. So to me, that's worthless then. Like, that's not worth the paper it's written on because I'm not going to say, well, we have this, and then not enforce it. So either it's enforceable or not.
And is it a, is this a perfect way to prevent what we are talking about preventing? Of course not, but I think it's gonna cause people to think twice about, do I want to park my car in the street because now I have to remember to move it in six days or in three, however. And if you're trying to just control behavior, sometimes that's enough to get people to say, I don't even want to think about that or mess with it because it's just another thing in my busy life that I'll have to concern myself with. I'm just gonna park it in the dang driveway, right? Maybe that's good enough for the council because I don't think there's a perfect solution to the problem that people are complaining about. But this is one way to try to end your behavior in a way that gets you eighty percent of the way there, ninety percent of the way there. Who knows? But, again, that's for you to decide. I don't have to make this decision, so...
You know, just to kind of, to what you were saying, the example of your neighborhood where you feel like this ordinance may not really be enforced. You know, I think this specifically is really gonna be resident-dependent to call in. I think it, I would imagine it would be really hard to proactively enforce because I don't think that Deputy West is taking a look at like, oh, yeah, that's a Jeep that's got a Pater's trailer hitch on it. That's been there for...
Take it.
Seventy-two hours. But you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, I think it is a hundred, almost a hundred percent it's gonna be on the residents to call it in.
Like a lot of city enforcement, I mean, we're complaint-based enforcement, right? Where city staff doesn't have the resources to go out and proactively look at every neighborhood and decide who's in violation of what. So you're, you're right.
Whose grass is too long, yeah.
Right, it would totally be complaint-based.
Yep. So...
Yeah, I have no desire to put our police force to charge them with, you know, with... They have better things to do than drive around looking for this. Again, most of our things that happen that the police respond to from calls, why aren't they gonna be complaint-based, right? So I don't think there's any charge of duty for them to run around and...
Yes, and again, I would, I agree. I'd much rather have them looking for red light runners and, you know, like, all of the things in the criminal element versus if a car X has been sitting there for two or three days. I know we're struggling with this, but I think just kind of overwhelmingly, I'm feeling, maybe save for you, Lori. I think I am just kind of reading the tea leaves and kind of figuring out what everybody has said. And it feels like there is an appetite to continue with this and to have some kind of restrictions for long-term on-street parking.
Yes, for me, there is. I just would like to see it a fairly extended length so that we're not, we're not trying to capture what this ordinance is not going to be able to prevent.
Do you want to table this till the next time, when Eric is back? Let me see what Brent has to say.
I was gonna just offer that, like, this unsolicited advice is that, it sounds like you're looking to define what determines a public nuisance. So maybe giving this a couple of weeks to determine that, we can look at other municipal ordinances because it's probably not three days, it's maybe not seven days, but it's at some point. So we can look at other city ordinances. We can, I can get that feedback from Paul Schultz related to street sweeping. I can get the feedback from Aaron Schmidt related to engineering standards for parking. And then you can kind of let your collective feedback sink in. You might get additional feedback from residents. I would offer that, you know, some of the calls that we get aren't resolved by probably any ordinance because the, like, the vehicles that are parked, like, let's use the example of the work trucks. They leave for the day and then come back. So like, there isn't any amount of time that's gonna resolve, like, a certain nuisance issue for like, maybe a cer, like, a certain property. But I think everyone would agree that if a car was, like, broken down or parked on a street for a year and didn't move and was maybe being vandalized, like, well, that's a public nuisance. So let's, let's find, that's the extreme on one end, and, you know, five-minute parking is the extreme on the other end. Like, let's find, you know, where that spot is where it's like, yeah, that's a nuisance that, you know, a reasonable person would agree because you're probably, there's all these variables that I think you're discovering that complicate this, like, perfect solution because there isn't one. And there probably isn't meant to be one because this is a lot based on human behavior and what people's tolerances are for parking. Like, we can't restrict parking on your side of the street in front of your house. Like, I've been in Carver long enough to know, like, I wouldn't park in front of Mary's house because that's where Mary parks. But somebody, if someone parked there, we couldn't issue them a citation. So like, all those nuances, which I think it'd be helpful just to understand what the public nuisance is. And I think reasonable people will agree to that, assess what that is. And this extra two weeks will maybe help you find that. We can get some ordinance examples that continue this discussion. And I think it, it shows folks that maybe aren't as involved in, like, city processes. Like, like, this is, like, they use the term, like, this is where the sausage making occurs. Like, it's not meant to be fast. So like, if you make a quick decision out of an ordinance, you know, it's usually a sign that maybe you went too fast because there are all these unintended consequences that occur. So, even though this was maybe a little bit tough to sit through, like, this is how it should look because you don't, once it's in there, then it's like, then it's in there. So, hopefully, this is a good kind of example of what it should be, even though it's not easy to do.
Yeah, I, I think that that's a great idea is to kind of revisit it in two weeks, just to talk kind of procedurally. I think I hear you saying and bringing it back to another work session in two weeks.
Yeah, with the exception, I, I feel like there is unanimity on the engine braking. So I would connect with the city attorney and bring that forward for adoption at your regular meeting. I think that's...
Because we're doing these three, as Kayla had requested, I think the same. Like, these are pretty separate items in here.
We'll do it anyway that you...
Is there any benefit to waiting and doing them all together versus separating?
No, and I think there's hunger for the engine braking one. So the sooner we can get, if there's, it sounds like there's a lot of support for that.
I would love to see that one.
Yeah.
We'll bring that one as a standalone ordinance.
So, back to procedure. We'll talk about this again in a work session in two weeks.
On February third.
On February third, which is a Monday night that week because there isn't a holiday on the Monday. We'll try to put it as number one on the work session agenda of discussion items so that if you want to sit through the discussion, hopefully, we can be a little bit...
And the sign ordinance is on there too.
That's gonna be a long work session. So just to, again, no buts made tonight. Nothing's happening, except that at our next meeting, we will be pushing that engine braking. We will be considering the engine braking ordinance for approval.
And that, you know, this probably goes without saying, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Like, that doesn't mean, like, the public input part needs to stop either. So if there's people watching that have perspectives on what defines a public nuisance or their own experiences that they hate the parking situation on their street, if you send it to me, I send it to the council, or you can email individual council members, all that. You know, I use the term ingredients are ingredients that, you know, we'll make the final decision.
Agreed. Okay, I am ready to move on from that. Does anyone disagree?
No, I don't disagree.
Okay, so let's move on to item eight point two from the regular meeting agenda, which is legislative priorities.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Annually, the council adopts a list of legislative priorities for state-level issues. Those priorities are then forwarded and communicated to our representatives at the state. So in this instance, it would be Representative Bobby Harder and Senator Glenn Gruenhagen. There's typically cities at the Capitol Day that the League of Minnesota City sponsors where there's some information on legislative trends and topics. And then throughout the day, cities are encouraged to schedule meetings with their local representatives to advocate for either local issues or statewide issues impacting cities. So the five issues that the council discussed at the previous work session were supportive local decision-making, funding for modernization of the Carver flood levy system, remote participation in city council meetings. So it's kind of a granular one where city council members, under conditions where they advertise their location and make it available to the public, can participate remotely. However, the city's position, at least within this legislative priority,[1786.61] Uh, however, uh, the city's position, at least within this legislative priority, is that COVID taught us that remote participation can be done in a transparent way uh, rather than uh, giving someone uh, your hotel room information or lobby information. Um, so we're advocating for that. The public notice requirement for newspapers. Uh, the city uh, has long since, all cities are required to issue public notices in newspapers, ordinances, bids, uh, minutes. Um, and unfortunately, we lost our local newspaper, so we're spending a editorial comment here, a lot of money to meet that requirement in the Waconia Patriot. And I don't believe that our residents and businesses and other stakeholders are accessing that. So is there another more creative way that we can uh, access um, residents through public notices than maybe what would be considered maybe an antiquated model? And then finally, the Minnesota uh, paid leave law. I updated the language just for intent. Um, so this is a new law that would uh, be implemented January one of twenty twenty-six that would provides essentially a new payroll tax uh, to fund uh, the Minnesota paid leave. So um, the assertion here, you know, is that uh, city tax dollars would be paid to provide uh, Minnesota paid leave benefits to other agencies and other businesses. So the city provides paid leave, uh, the ESSL, which was brought up at the last meeting, the city already provides that through PTO, so that's really a non-issue. So I deleted all that language out. But the paid leave law is taking public dollars, public tax dollars and then seeking to fund uh, sick leave benefits at other businesses or agencies. And so fundamentally, just based on previous experience, the cities oppose that just because of the business model or funding model that it uses. Um, so we're this priority then would seek uh, the legislature to exempt cities and other public agencies, but specifically cities from an unfunded mandate like this. I don't have an estimate of what that would be because I'm frankly a little concerned about over-promising and under-delivering. They could still tinker with this legislation on the formula that they're using, but the goal of the formula is to create the funding pool necessary to provide paid leave to businesses uh, that don't currently provide it to fund the program. So happy to answer any questions. Again, this is your document, so uh, you can change it as you uh, deem fit.
And I think when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, we talked about like the order in this, especially this time around, is pretty important. Um, we I think it's important that we prioritize protecting local decision-making. Um, we have seen that threatened maybe for, you know, I definitely remember for the last probably four or six years. I'm sure it was taking place before and maybe I just wasn't as in tune with what's going on in St. Paul. But the thought behind that is that folks in St. Paul are coming up with one-size-fits-all regulations that don't necessarily, from folks who may necessarily never have been to the city of Carver and realize that we're different and we're special and that the one-size-fits-all doesn't work. Um, the levy project is something that I think we all, well, it's very important to me. I think it's something that we all know that we've been working on for a really, really long time and that is purely trying to get some extra funding from the state of Minnesota, um, especially since we didn't get a bonding bill last year, which I think is still a huge pain point among many uh, that we're seeing in St. Paul right now. So um, just teeing it up like that. Are there any other questions, comments, feedback?
I just want to say thanks. We had talked about this at our last work session and, you know, the last one, number five, I had some comments on that. This has been, we worked nicely. I appreciate that. Uh, again, Courtney hit on a couple. I'm going to hit on the newspaper requirement. Um, I don't think there's a big readership from the city of Carver that is grabbing the Waconia Patriot and reading that. So hopefully something can be done because this is, again, an antiquated system. The Chaska Herald was great when it was here, but still not everybody gets the paper. So no matter what you do, you can't hit everybody. Um, and then the remote participation one, I think, again, as COVID um, proved to us that you can, you can do things remotely when needed and not have to, again, give your room number in New Hampshire. So thank you for your hard work on this. I'm super happy with exactly the way it looks. Excuse me. Lori?
Um, I support them. I appreciate that they're an order priority and absolutely, if there was ever any doubt, I hugely want to see continued funding for our flood levy.
You know, I would say like maybe with the exception of number one and two, I don't know that they're necessarily in priority beyond that. I just think that like number one is so important to that. I think I shared last time Brent showed me a draft and I was like, let's make decision-making, local decision-making number one, just so that I mean, I'm sure none of us ever half-read something, but just in case we only have a short attention span of whoever is seeing this, that they see that first and foremost.
We just talked about it with that council, having local controls in our work session just before this. So I'm happy to see that that is our number one and this go around.
I agree. I support it as is.
Um, the only other thing that I was thinking of, um, and more is just an FYI, we've generally shared this with our elected officials in St. Paul who are Senator Grunhagen and Representative Harder. Um, but I um, would advocate this time around for sharing it also with Commissioner Fahy. Just because I think it gives him a little bit more insight into where our collective head is at in terms of what's important to us here in the city of Carver. Especially as they're contemplating discussing some topics that have some local decision-making consequences. Um, all right, uh, let's see. With that, I would make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five legislative priorities for the city of Carver.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by uh, Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right, uh, communications. You're good? That's true. What that was. Um, all right, uh, Lori, council communications.
I have a question for Mr. Merrick. Um, we in our um, previous meeting um, this month, did the
Appointments?
Um, I might, I need to be reminded on who to contact for Carver County leaders. At one time they were meeting.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
Okay.
Yeah, since uh, you probably didn't get it, but the, it's late this afternoon, uh, sent an email out, Car- the county board is disbanded, Carver County leaders.
I'm not surprised. It was really, there wasn't much traction.
So, um, connected with Dave on it, that so according to Dave, we don't need, we don't necessarily need to like amend it, but we can if you wish to.
I don't see, I don't need to.
I think, I think it doesn't hurt to leave it in there. I doubt it's going to be resurrected, but if it does, then you would be the person still and if it doesn't, then I just think we can, just, you don't have to go to a meeting every quarter or whatever it was, so.
All right.
Um, but for next year, I mean, if they're still disbanded, we would just remove that from the annual appointment list, you know?
Any else?
No.
Kristi?
Uh, I wasn't able to make the HPC meeting, so we will have Eric, uh, who filled in for me. He can give um, a report unless you have anything you wanted to mention.
Yeah, the council approved, or not the council, the Preservation Commission approved a door uh, for uh, an address on Fourth Street, Lisa Mossley's. I think it's right across the street here. Whatever house number that is.
It's right across the street.
Kayla?
Anyways, it's on.
Up.
Okay. Planning Commission was canceled this month, so no updates there?
All right, I have a little bit of a laundry list. Um, as part of my role with the League of Minnesota Cities, we had interviews for the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Board, which is part of our our duties. We had eight candidates vying for one position, um, and Phil Kern, um, the city manager from Delano was appointed. Um, if that name sounds familiar, it's the same Phil Kern that's going to be doing our board retreat, our strategy session. Um, let's see, June eleventh was the Light and Seek um, event down at um, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Land. It was perhaps the most perfect night. The weather was warm, especially comparatively.
You just said June, so it was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. July. Sorry, uh, July. So tired. Um, January eleventh was Light and Seek. It was really great. They had over five hundred ice luminaries and then they had another two hundred kind of decorating the trees. You guys have never been, you really need to go. It was a really special evening. They always tried to plan it on a night when there is a fuller moon to, so there there's no issue kind of walking around. Last year, if you didn't attend, you might not remember, but there was no snow. So it was kind of really hard to navigate and see your way through. This year, it was just beautiful. There's all kinds of snow and it was, it was really, really nice. Um, let's see here, getting my phone to turn back on. Um, on January fifteenth was the Chamber Luncheon. It was their annual business meeting. Um, and they did the election of their board officers. Um, let's see, we had a League of Minnesota Cities Board meeting on January sixteenth. I'm so careful to say January. Um, last Friday on the seventeenth, we had the Minnesota Mayor's Association Meeting. Um, the president of that group this year, so we're trying to kind of do some strategy and figure out what we want to be doing in twenty twenty-five. Um, also on Jan- Ja- January seventeenth was the opening of Edible India, which is a new restaurant, which is in Chaska. It's in the former Reds Savoy Space, which is just north of uh, Duncan. Probably wondering why I'm talking about a Chaska business opening and why I'm so excited about it. Um, it's owned by a group of at least three couples who are Carver residents. So um, when I was at the DiBali Celebration in early November, they were all excited about this restaurant and they're finally opening it up. So really cool to see them do it. The food is fantastic. Um, on Monday, uh, January twentieth, I met with the folks from the Carver Black Sox. Uh, they are looking forward to their twenty twenty-five season. They were thinking that they would have the schedule out by the end of this week, so something to look forward to. Um, today uh, was the Mayor's Breakfast at St. Thomas, which was sponsored by the St. Paul Area Chamber and then the Minneapolis Chamber. Mayor Frye um, and Carter spoke and it was just interesting to hear their perspectives on kind of every single issue that you've ever heard about within their two cities. Um, let's see. Unrelated to specific events, but last week, two of our businesses in the city of Carver celebrated their second Carverseries, as I like to say. Um, it was the Getaway Motor Cafe and Strains of the Earth. So really exciting to see them continue to thrive and participate in our uh, community's successful business community. Um, and then I just had on the other community leaders, that's no longer. So that is it for me.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And a motion by Councilmember Ma.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Sayer. Thank you for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Good evening.